To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President, Marion's not here. We got her name listed as president. We'll approve the manchester July 9 meeting.
I'll second that. Motion to approve the manchester July 9 by Christian Jean Greco sent by Christian Hall. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Motion to recess commissioners' meeting on my salary board.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. So the salary board. The salary board's called to order. Any woman?
Uh, we better slow down on that.
I don't know what we can do. We don't have a quorum, do we?
We don't have a quorum. Where's Kathy Benedict? Does she know we were... anybody's...
Yeah, so it's from like a...
Well, we can't do anything.
Can't do anything.
So what do you need? Three people for quorum?
Yeah. Motion to close the salary board for lack of a quorum.
I'll second that.
What's the time? Three seconds later from when we opened it.
Right on one's, no. Back to commissioners.
We opened the commissioners' meeting. We convene the commissioners' meeting. Mark the time. Motion approved. Item number seven is listed on the agenda.
By Christian Jean Greco sent by Christian Hall. Item seven on the agenda. Cassius person. No transfers. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Christian Jean Greco sent by Christian Hall. Approved item made on the agenda. Some requests and payments. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Uh, motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion to approve item nine on the agenda by Christian Jean Greco sent by Christian Hall to advertise for sale for, or bids for sale for the 2009 Ford Transportation Bus. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Uh, motion to approve item number 10 is listed on the agenda.
Second that. Motion by Christian Jean Greco sent by Christian Hall to re-advertise for, request for quote for consideration privatization of recycling center. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Uh, motion to approve item number 11, subject to review by our solicitor again.
And to have...
And we have some additions, so they're minor tweaks. I want a mechanic's lien. And I didn't see anything about waiver mechanic's lien.
Correct. I don't know if that's going to be an issue or not, but I can, I'm going to have that reviewed.
Okay.
So we can, we can talk about it. You can approve the project today pending...
Yeah, pending approval and those reserves. That's what, that's what we'll do to keep it moving.
Right.
We gotta get it done.
Right.
I'll second that. Questions or comments? Yes.
I'm trying to understand this now. You're talking about upgrades to the air conditioning, heating system in the courthouse, annex, jail...
Yep.
And Warner Building.
Yep.
With a price tag of $4.3 million.
Right.
And this is, the work is to begin next month, or this month?
This month.
July 23rd and finish by next year, in the middle of next year.
Right.
And paid with general funds.
Right.
So this is absolutely necessary then?
Absolutely.
Absolutely?
Well, it's about a $4 million savings over 20 years. Because if we don't do it, we'll spend about $8.9 million over 20 years to keep doing what we're doing.
And what are you doing?
Uh, we wait for something to break and then we go find another part to replace them.
Now, in some cases, we gotta get the parts made because the heating system's so bad, they don't make them anymore. And it goes on and on.
So you're changing the heating system to what system?
Be natural gas. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 12 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Christian Jean Greco sent by Christian Hall. Approved item 12 on the agenda. Now to the hiring of Sarah Smith and Kathy Aldrich as chair in Stockholm for the dope permits. Questions or comments? Yes.
Could you please explain why we need to hire three part-time people for hundred permits? For dope permits?
They taken, well, all the dope permits, it's not just a hundred. There's a lot of permits that get mailed out. And it's the applications get mailed out waiting for them to come back. So basically what it is, is they have to take them, stuff in the envelope, put together, put the stamps on it, and get it all together.
What happened to the people who used to handle this?
Well, they, we bring them in each year for part-time for just a, it's like a week or two to do it.
Do you know how many we have to process, Bruce?
No, I have no idea.
Uh, Susquehanna, oh, Unit 3C got 32,000. I'm going to tell you, 10,000 to 12,000 of them came in one day. There's a time limit on getting them processed and getting back to the people and reporting to the game commission every day so they can keep track of how many are left over. And then it starts all over again next week for the non-residents. It's boxes and boxes in a matter of days is the problem.
I now understand it, but what percentage does the county get back from the hunting permits, you know, from the whole industry of hunting? What percentage do we get in Susquehanna County?
Of the dope permits?
Yeah. How much money do we make on it in the county so we lay out the expense, et cetera, et cetera?
Well, it's up to the county treasurers to do it. I forget what they get, what we get per permit for doing it.
It's not, yeah, I don't think it's a lot. I think, I think we're about break even or we get a little bit. I know there was some talk before about, you know, they'd like to see it go someplace else again.
And the treasurers don't want that to happen. Don't want that to happen.
Could we note that it is, that the positions are in the treasurer's office?
Don't say that.
Yeah.
I, Sarah, it's a good, geez. Good thing you show up.
Good thing.
They are in the treasurer's office.
I know they are.
Yeah.
But could we note that?
They last for a couple of weeks.
I know that, but could we note that?
Yes, absolutely. With that amendment that they're for the treasurer's office.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 13 is listed on the agenda.
Second that. Motion by Christian Jean Greco sent by Christian Hall. Now to the hiring of Elizabeth Speaker to the full-time judicial law clerk position. Questions or comments? Yes.
What type of background for this job does a person have to have?
Law degree. She graduated from law school. She took the bar this summer. So she'll wait and see if she passes the bar. Worked for the...
Any practical experience?
Uh, as a practicing attorney? Generally no. Generally, none of the law clerks that the judges had for a bunch of years had any practical. It's research and writing his opinions to help him.
Okay, thank you.
Is she replacing somebody or is this a new position?
Replacing Ankor, who left three or four months ago. Left three or four months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, replacing him.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 14 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Christian Jean Greco sent by Christian Hall. Now to the hiring of Elizabeth Carbo for the fiscal assistant officer for Children Unit. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we get into public comment, we did receive a bid for the paving project. Unfortunately, we have to reject it. The bids were due yesterday by 4:00. So that was part of the advertising as well as the bid pack that went out.
Doesn't say that on the bid package.
It says 9:00 AM.
It says in the bid packs that all bids are due by the, by 4:00 PM on the 22nd.
Why do you think it says 9:00 AM?
It says 9:00 AM on the...
Is where we're going to open them because of the meeting?
Right. That's where it's going to be let.
And what project is this?
For the bids. And we didn't get any bids when we did advertise it.
Right. And this is the bid pack. This is the paper that was in the bid pack that says right in there that have to be submitted by the, July 22nd by 4:00 PM.
4:00 PM.
Okay, I, I read on the, it should be right on the bid.
Says the all envelopes containing bid proposals shall be clearly marked, bid proposals for letting on July 23rd, 2014 at 9:00 AM. For letting on July 23rd at 9:00 AM. And all the bids are due by the 22nd.
This going to be re-advertised?
Well, probably going to have to re-advertise.
Do you have a copy of the advertising thing?
I don't have it right here.
I say we gotta go by what the bid said. Do I want to do it? No. I'd like to open up your bid and see what it is because we didn't get any bids. So really...
Well, can't you make a decision to override what you wrote?
Well, then what if somebody else wanted to submit a bid and didn't do it?
Why didn't they submit it beforehand then?
Well, then that's the good point. That's where we're at. I don't disagree with you.
Well, if you, if you're going to decide to re-advertise, you have one bid.
Just start it down and then bring it up to you.
Well, if we re-advertise, we have to at least, we have to put it in the paper. It has to be a cycle.
Yeah.
Remember, unfortunately, it will...
And then what is the project again? Can you explain the project?
paving project for basically three streets that the, that the county has right here. One is up by the upper part of the green, up around the old jail, and down here at ADH Shangell Street.
And here's why I don't want to open the bid now. I believe, look, it doesn't make any sense. I would like to just open it because nobody else bid and say you got it. The problem with it is I don't think legally we can do that even though that makes no sense. We're going to have to rebid it, re-advertise it. I don't want to open this up now and announce a price. If you or somebody else wants to rebid, then the gig is up. They'll know what your price is. I don't think that's fair to anybody.
Can we do it in a two-week period? We don't have to advertise it a couple times at once.
Yeah, all you gotta do is advertise it once.
If we make a motion to...
Make a motion to re-advert, re-advertise it for bid again.
On the, okay, let me see what...
When's the next meeting?
The August 13th is the meeting, so August 12th at 4:00 PM, the bids would be due.
They're always due the day before we have the meeting.
Okay.
So we are going to re-advertise it.
So I will give you this back.
And it's auto-open.
And it's auto-open, and you can resubmit it. Just go, you know, if you want, you can pick up a new bid pack. It'll do the same thing except the dates are going to be changed on it.
Okay.
It'll say letting for the, for the August, what is it, 13th?
13th.
August 13th meeting. So if you want to, you can just open yours up, change your information to the dates.
Usually we'll have to pick up a new one.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right. So yeah, we'll have them ready probably tomorrow. They'll be picked up and then just make sure you have it back in on the 12th.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
Public comment.
Shall we hit that?
I did say...
Do you have questions?
Nice try.
Nice, nice, nice try. You always do that one. Let's adjourn before we even start.
Bruce, you got questions?
I raised my hand about a question.
Come on.
Yes, Vera?
All right. Yesterday, there was some powerful news that was released by our state auditor, general auditor for the state, Mr. Eugene Di Pasquale. And he reported a scathing report on DEP performance. And there's been an 18-month study, and the study is completed. And it's basically revealing inconsistent enforcement, disorganization, poor record management. And he started the audit in January 2013. And they identified eight problems, 29 recommendations. And basically, the synopsis is DEP is underfunded, understaffed, and inconsistent in how it approaches shale gas development. He released it at the Capitol Press Conference yesterday morning. There's a 27th page also responds from DEP. And we have also comments from Mr...
I gotta get a folder. Just keep going.
Mr., Mr. John Hanger, the former DEP secretary. And let's see, what he has to say. I liked basically a lot of what he had to say. And... He'd like to see more changes, John Hanger, including a 50% staff increase in DEP's Oil and Gas Bureau, stronger regulations, and an independent office to handle public complaints. Public complaints are not sufficiently handled. So this is important to know that we have a DEP that's not protecting us sufficiently. And it's been now confirmed by the auditor general after 18-months study. Have you heard about it? Did you notice anything? I mean, I know you've said in the past that you don't get much response from the DEP, that they haven't worked with you, like you would like to see them work with you. But have you heard this report since yesterday?
Not since yesterday, no. But I find it, and I, you know, I got you a chance to read it, but I find it kind of interesting that, that they would say the DEP doesn't have enough funding when they take a huge chunk off the top of the impact fee money that goes directly to DEP. So how much more money do the taxpayers have to give DEP in order to take and have enough people to take and do what they're supposed to be doing?
Well, I'll give you some figures because they released the figures, figures, the state's general fund contributions. It comes from state general fund to DEP. It peaked in 2008 and 2009 at $229 million, then declined to $127 million in 2013. That's about, that's about half.
And they say how much Act 13 money they're putting into DEP?
Nope. They didn't mention Act 13 at all. They just said state general fund.
Right.
And then they said in 2014, there was a slight rise to $139 million. They also tracked employees. They were down to 2,700 this year after a high of 3,000 in 2007 and 2008. So we had more funding before gas drilling really went underway heavily in the beginning than we do now. And now we have...
Question, what they did with all the money that they got from Act 13 that where they were supposed to hire all these additional people?
That's what you have to find out. So you'll have to read the report. The report is out. It's the full report from the auditor general, and we'll see what it says about Act 13.
Other news, did have a meeting with Pendot. Some other projects that have gotten approved on the roadways. Of course, I've reported several times, Route 29 is getting repaved. They're doing all the drainage underneath it right now from Montrose toward the state line. The slides are supposed to be going out to bid. The Route 706, I heard, is supposed to be getting paved now from the bottom of Summit Hill to Tiffany Corners. And I've also heard their Route 167 from Tiffany Corners down to, was all the way down to Ha, Brooklyn, down through Brooklyn is supposed to all get repaved, as well as the North Road is being done now. Lake Ave also got added to the list. They've already got that ground down, so Lake Ave is getting repaved now. So those are some of the projects I, we're able to find out about that they had going. It's about $50 or $60 million more that they're putting into it.
And how do they get the funds for that? Do they have to...
This transportation funding.
Transportation funding.
And...
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure. And then I also saw that they're putting in the gas lines on Lake Ave and other, and High Street. Do you know how many streets are getting gas lines? Is it the whole borough? Do you know anything about that?
My understanding is eventually it's the whole borough. I know they're going...
Eventually?
Yeah. I know they were going to Lake Ave. They're coming here and supposed to be doing everything in between. So the holdup right now, of course, is Pendot because Lake Ave is a, is a state road and waiting for permits and stuff from Pendot.
I also understood that the holdups could also be that they don't have enough people subscribed on a particular road to the system, and then they won't put the lines in. Do you know anything about that?
I haven't heard that.
You haven't heard that?
Any other questions? Yes, Bruce?
Yeah, it's not a question. It's a request that the commissioners, Marion included, please do your homework on smart meters. And if you need websites, we'll gladly send them to you about how dangerous they are to the health and safety of everyone in this county. And to make an, well, once you do that, to somehow make it official to our legislators to get off the, let me rephrase that, to open their eyes and their ears and educate themselves about this, this monstrosity, which will cost us a ton of, a ton of more money, intrudes on our privacy, unknown to explode, have infrared that causes cancer, and intrudes on everything you do in your life. When you're home, when you're not home, you're using too much, you're using too little, we'll raise your rates, we'll shut you down. This is big brother. And I don't think our legislators understand, nor, or perhaps they choose not to understand how, how this will negatively affect everybody. Everybody. Including, I mean, here, right here in the courthouse, everything. You're no longer in control.
And I think you add to that too, Bruce, is they're always talking about creating jobs in Pennsylvania. How many jobs is this going to take away?
They put a meter on it. It doesn't create one job.
Right.
Not one job.
But it does take away the job for the person that was reading it.
Can you explain smart meters, what this is, and explain what it is?
Well, I can tell you what the concept was. The concept, there's an initiative to have the electric companies right now to reduce the amount of megawatts that's being used. I know that Petalac, I can't remember the exact number, but it's so many megawatts they've been asked to reduce their consumption by. Smart meters are meters that are put in place that can be basically controlled from a, from an off-site. There are, already they did pilot programs with some businesses that businesses can sign up for a reduced rate. But when they get into peak time for electricity, they can take and the electric company can then take and shut their power off or reduce their power to conserve energy. And that can all be done remotely. So the issue is, is with the smart meters is to, again, how smart are the meters and how much control can they have? The other issue that, that has come with it is that, and I haven't been able to confirm that, is whether the meters themselves are even UL listed or not. I haven't personally seen a smart meter myself, except for pictures of them. But the information I have received so far, they're not even UL approved, which brings up some caution there as to the possibility of a fire or any type of issues there. So it, it does allow the electric company to take and monitor the usage. And depending on how smart their, and smart meter is and how smart their computers are, as to how much information they're going to be able obtain, and how much they can control as to what you're going to have.
So this is what, to reduce consumption? You mean you can't just consume what you want?
No.
No, you cannot.
Well, there you go.
So if you have an all-electric house and you consume a certain amount, let's say it's 2,000, what is it, kilowatt-hours, 2,000 kilowatt-hours a month?
Well, I don't know if they've come out and said that right now, but they will have the potential with a smart meter to be able to turn your meter on or turn your meter off.
And that's private homes, not businesses? Or just...
That I don't know.
It's everything. And not only do they have the ability to turn it on and turn it off, they'll know where you are, when you're home, and they may even be able to determine how many people are in your home at any given time because of the amount of electricity that you're using. They'll know whether you're running your washing machine or your dryer or whatever, because at certain periods of the day, there'll be an uptick in consumption. And they all know exactly what your life pattern is. And this has already been established. Texas had them. They, they were able to, in certain towns, have them removed, but people...
They were killing the cattle, literally.
They were killing cattle. These things have been known to stop pacemakers, et cetera.
Because they're emitting something?
They're emitting a wave, yeah.
Is it like electromagnetic wave?
And the only reason we don't have them in Susquehanna County, by the way, is because we have mountains. When they find out that they can have the satellite technology, they will be importing them. They will be using them because it's, it's just the one further step along Agenda 21 to control consumption and usage. If you're using too much electricity, they will shut you down. If they think you're using too much electricity, they will shut you down. They're already making efforts to ban, and it's already in Pennsylvania, to ban the use of wood stoves. So your next alternative is to go to electricity or to gas. If you don't have the ability, then you're going to need electricity.
This is not conspiracy theory.
This is fact.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Um, I know the bid proposals were thrown out. They're resubmitted. I just wanted to make note that, to avoid further controversies. This is what I was going after.
Well, bids will be opened and read at approximately 9:00 AM. Seal bids will be received on every 4:00 AM on the above letting date.
So that's what I was...
We got two conflicting...
That's front pages of the document.
No, they've been trying it, and he may be the only one. He's been given the job.
What time you bid?
This, I already opened it.
That's all right.
Open his bid, give him the job. Let's get this over with.
We will look at it. Let's, who's it from and how much is it?
LNT Construction.
Who?
LNT Construction. Alan Begington. We're also Contour Construction.
What are you also?
Contour Construction.
So if I'm reading your bid correctly... Looks like your bid price is $51,596, correct?
Total, yeah.
We'll look at it, let you know.
Okay.
We, we don't, we'll go through it, make sure it meets the specs.
Yep.
And then we'll make a determination.
Okay.
Because, you know, we have the right to accept or reject anything that comes in.
Yep. Do you want to make a motion to...
Yeah, if it meets, I'll make a motion that if it meets all the bid specs requirements, we will accept it.
I'll second that. Questions or comments?
And how come we only have one bid? What's going on in this county? And we have somebody from out of the county. I mean, what is, you have people that don't... Nope. We have people that don't need to work? They're so busy?
Where have you been, Vera?
No bids.
All in favor?
One bid.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye. You brought that back in.
You brought it in.
Bruce!
Yes, sir.
What kind of meter? You have Clavrot electrics where you live?
I spoke to the guy over at Clavrot. I think his name is Ru, a couple of years ago. And he, basically, he said, because of the hills, we can't do it now. But...
But when they get the satellite technology...
When they get the technology...
Well, wait, 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 wait. There's no meter reader comes to my house?
No.
Read it?
This is not, that's not a smart meter.
That's not...
You don't have a smart meter, right?
Yeah.
What is it that...
They drive by. They still drive by your house to read it.
I don't think they do. They can't...
No, nobody comes up to our house. It's all electric.
They do a wireless thing. It's a wireless.
Yeah, there's nobody...
But smart meter is completely different. This is infrared technology. And the infrared literally, I'm not sure how it works, but it goes through the whole house, okay? And it also emits radiation. This is bad news.
So you say we don't have that now?
You don't have it yet?
You will have it soon because there are places in Pennsylvania that already do have it. Down in Bucks County, they've been trying to install them. They've been trying to install in Bucks County. It's all over.
Kind of have it already.
Where do you have your meter?
Where's your meter anyway?
On the outside house.
Okay. We're all screwed if you have it on the outside. In a lot of the counties down south, if you have a meter in the basement, you can keep them out of your house. But if you have it outside, and you're, you're at a commissioners' meeting, you go home and you go, hey, guess what?
I got no meter. And they don't have to have your permission to come up and put one in.
They're public utility.
Well, can you move it into the basement?
Can't let, you don't have to let them in the house.
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
You don't.
But the fact is that it's most of the time outside the house.
Yeah, that's where they are.
And by the way, if you try to prevent them from putting it in, they will call a policeman to make sure that they stand guard while they put them in.
You know, Clavrot is watching. Do we have something to say about that?
No. You know something?
Clavrot is already taxing us for window technology.
For windows that we don't have. And, and by the way, the tax money that's on this tax list is unbelievable. They make out...
I got an idea for you. Clabrec's always looking for somebody going to the board.
No, my people are gone. We don't say yes, we say no.
Do you know that though?
We know that.